Okay, well, welcome everyone to the Eugene Planning Commission. My name is Dan Isaacson, I'm the Chair of the Eugene Planning Commission. And we're here to talk about the Capital Improvement Program Overview. I'm going to first pass it off to Commissioner Edwards, who's going to read our Land Acknowledgement Statement. Commissioner Edwards.
Thank you Chair Isaacson. Since the time memorial, the Calipulia people have been the indigenous stewards of our region, building dynamic communities, maintaining balance with wildlife and enacting sustainable land practices. This land acknowledgement is a way of resisting the erasure of indigenous histories and to honor native communities by inviting truth and reconciliation. Following treaties between 1851 and 1855, Calipulia people were dispossessed of their indigenous homeland by the United States government and forcibly removed to the coastal coast reservation in western Oregon. As we consider the impacts of colonization, we also acknowledge the strength and resiliency of displaced indigenous people. The city of Eugene is built within the traditional homelands known as Calipulia. Calipulia descendants are citizens of the Confederated Tribes of Grand Ronde, community of Oregon, and the Confederated Tribes of the Sillets Indians of Oregon. They continue to make contributions in our communities here across the lands, here and across the lands. We express our respect for the inherent political sovereignty of all federally recognized tribal nations and indigenous people who live in the state of Oregon and across the nation. Therefore, the Planning Commission recognizes that what we do today will affect many generations who will come after us.
Thank you. We also have time for public comment. We haven't had public comment in the past two meetings. So I don't know, do we have anybody in the queue for a public comment?
So we don't have anyone in the queue just yet, and I think once we go over the the process of providing comments, then we may have some hands raised.
Okay, do you want to go over that process?
I'll go over that right now. All right. So, hi everyone, my name is Linda Baker. The Planning Commission has allotted 10 minutes for public comment this evening to ensure that anyone wishing to speak has adequate opportunity. Each speaker will be limited to three minutes. We will announce whose turn it is to provide public comment as well as announcing who is up next. When you are announced for public comment, you will be promoted to a Zoom panelist, which will allow you to unmute and turn on your video if you choose. Please do not unmute or turn on your video until it is your turn for public comment. When your public comment is concluded, up to three minutes long, you will be returned to the Zoom attendee status. If any technical difficulties are encountered, we'll move on to the next person in the queue and try again after that person's comment. With these instructions out of the way, I'm going to see who. Yes, if you would like to provide public comment, please raise your hand and I'm not seeing anything just yet. I think we can give it about a minute and see. We have two attendees currently right now.
Okay.
Yeah, and I am seeing no raised hands.
Okay. Well, let's turn it over to staff for our Capital Improvement Program Overview, starting with Ms. Kation from Finance.
Thank you very much. Good evening, everyone. My name is Kasia Edison. I'm a senior financial analyst in central finance, and I'm going to give an overview this evening of our capital improvement program. So real quick, I'm going to share my screen. And please let me know if everyone can see that clearly.
We can.
Okay, thank you. Like I said, my name is Kasia Edison. With me today are Jennifer Willer, the City Engineer, and Jeff Perry, our Public Buildings and Facilities Director. I'll kick off today's presentation with an overview of the Capital Improvement Program, and then I'll turn it over to Jeff and Jennifer to give some detail about their respective program areas. For those not familiar with the CIP, it is a multi-year planning document that serves as a roadmap for the city's capital projects for fiscal years 24 to 29. It is also a budget document. Once it is approved, these projects become the city's capital budget for the next two fiscal years. Capital projects are resource intensive and require significant advanced planning to execute. A multi-year capital plan is considered best practice for local governments, and the CIP process helps us connect our spending with our goals and the community's needs. You may have noted that the CIP title this year does not match previous year's naming conventions. This CIP still spans the same forward-looking six-year period as previous CIPs, but the title has been revised to align with our new biennial budget nomenclature. As such, the 2023 through 2029 CIP is the basis of the 2023 to 2025 capital budget. Capital planning process is explained in this diagram. It shows the basic process by which a project goes from idea to construction to use. Throughout the process, there are multiple sources of input that inform city staff on the needs and desires of the community and drive forward the capital planning process. Beginning in the upper left corner, a capital need is first identified and analyzed through a variety of planning and modeling efforts. These efforts are typically documented through master plans, and depending on how the information is generated for the plan or how the plan is to be used, these plans may be developed with engagement from the public and city council. For example, the transportation system plan had extensive public engagement due to the wide-ranging implications to city policies, regulations, and project priorities. In the next step of the planning process, more detailed project plans are made in collaboration with engineering and design teams, partner agencies, and input from the community. Funding options, including qualifying grant opportunities, are also identified in this phase. Once funding and project plans are in place, CIP is compiled and presented to the Budget Committee. This creates another opportunity for members of the public to weigh in, both in public comment and in feedback from the citizen members of that committee. Once the city council approves the CIP in March, the capital projects therein receive appropriation authority through the budget process. And after budget adoption, the next phase of planning, design, and building can begin. This slide we're highlighting some of the CIP improvements and continuing efforts that we've implemented over the last few years. We are continuing to dial in on GHG project-specific and operating cost reporting. All of these initiatives were implemented in the last two CIPs, answering requests from the Budget Committee and Council to increase transparency in the capital program. In the FY 20 through 25 CIP, GHG reporting was added to meet goals of the Climate Recovery Ordinance. This year's CIP continues to approve upon GHG emissions estimates for capital projects. A total of approximately 40,000 GHGs are currently estimated to result from construction projects in the 2023 through 2029 CIP. GHG emissions details can be found within the document posted to the city's website. Additionally, more project-specific reporting, as opposed to project buckets, was implemented in previous CIPs in order to increase transparency. This year's CIP continues that effort with a total of 128 projects or programs identified. Finally, in the table on the right, you will see that the total additional operating costs estimated in the CIP come to approximately 3.6 million. We attempt to estimate these costs where possible to improve future budget planning as well as communication with you and our community. In many cases, projects in the CIP are in early-phase development, and estimating operating costs at this point in time is not possible. Such cost estimates are expected to appear in future CIP or capital budgets. This chart shows how the excuse me, this chart shows how the requested CIP funds are divided into six program areas. Our total CIP capital request equals $310.7 million. This does not include the $3.65 million in expected operating costs associated with the projects in the CIP that was shown on this previous slide. You will note that the airport has the largest portion of the CIP with 13 projects totaling almost $147 million. Transportation is the second-largest program area with 32 projects totaling $94.3 million. Of note, airport and transportation also account for the majority of the estimated GHG emissions from project construction. This chart depicts the funding status of CIP projects from different areas. The dark blue bars indicate where funding is identified. These are projects with a likelihood of receiving available funding such as grants, systems development charges, and donations. This funding status category makes up 78% or about 243 million of the CIP. The light blue portions are projects with secured or dedicated funding such as stormwater and wastewater user fees, bond funding, and transfers from operating funds. This funding status category makes up 22% or about 67 million of the CIP. Projects without funding either identified or secured are not included in the CIP. Our capital projects are funded in a multitude of ways. This graph shows a variety of funding sources over the $310 million in anticipated capital funding. As you can see, the Airport Construction Fund is by far the largest source of funding for the CIP. This fund is fully supported by airport revenues, and no general fund capital is required for any of the airport projects in the CIP. Our second and third largest funding sources are grants from the FAA or other federal funding. This chart shows capital projects by project categories. Category definitions are included in the Capital Budget Overview section of the budget document. The current CIP mostly consists of projects in the new capital facilities and preservation and maintenance categories. New capital facilities is the largest category in terms of dollars requested. Most of that funding will be directed towards airport projects, while the largest number of projects in the category are for parks and open space projects. Preservation and maintenance is our second-largest category and consists primarily of transportation projects, but also has notable numbers of wastewater and facility projects. Now I'm going to turn things over to Jeff Perry, our Facilities Director, to talk about public buildings and facilities capital projects in the new CIP.
All right, thanks, Kasia. I'll ask you to go to the next slide there. All right. I'm here to review the CIP for buildings and facilities projects. The city maintains and preserves a wide variety of public facilities, including community centers, swimming pools, parking structures, public safety facilities, park restrooms, historic buildings, the Holt Center, and the Eugene Public Library. This represents over 200 buildings and structures totaling approximately 2 million square feet. In addition to preservation and maintenance, the city also plans for and constructs new and expanded facilities to meet the growing needs of our community. The general fund is the primary source of funding for the preservation and maintenance of public buildings and facilities with major with funding for major renovations and new buildings coming from dedicated or external sources such as the recent Park and Rec Recreation Bond and Art Funds. Next slide. Public buildings and facilities projects are developed from multiple adopted plans, facility condition reports, and feedback from customers and facility maintenance staff. Some of the plans that guide our work include the Parks and Rec System Plan, the Facility Condition Database, the Parking Structure Condition Analysis, the Americans with Disabilities Act, and LEED certification for major construction projects. Capital improvement projects for general fund public facilities fall under the following categories. New capital facilities. Projects in this category typically provide for either new or replacement of facilities or projects that help expand existing services and are of such a scale to warrant classification as standalone projects. Large-scale facility changes that are needed to provide for community growth are found in this category projects. Facility preservation and maintenance. These projects preserve, maintain, and repair systems associated with existing facilities and are split into six preservation and maintenance program areas that include annual exterior preservation and maintenance, annual flooring and interior upgrades, hazardous remediation, parking lot and pavement maintenance, small roofing projects, and contingency and emergency projects. General site and facility improvements. Projects in this category include modifications or additions to existing facilities to meet operational, safety, and cost efficiency goals and to comply with the ADA. The primary goal of this program is to address changing program functions and needs or to improve service delivery. These type of projects have limited impact on facility operating costs as their purpose is to upgrade or reconfigure space for more effective service delivery. Each fiscal year, our internal facility board helps prioritize our upcoming facility improvement projects. Projects approved by the board for FY 23 include security upgrades and fencing improvements at Fire Station 6 and a number of community centers. Next slide. The CIP includes approximately $8 million allocated for specific building and structures projects. A little more, a little over 25% of the projects are funded with general capital project dollars. You might notice that the total amount is much lower than the last CIP, which is primarily due to the completion of the bond-funded recreation facilities projects. Next, I'll discuss some specific CIP projects our team has completed and will be working on in the upcoming biennial. Roofing replacement are some of the most critical projects we work on since failures and water penetration can cause catastrophic damage to buildings and equipment. Every CIP includes numerous roof replacement or repair projects, and the CIP is no different. Here's a photo of the Holt Center's slope roof, which is scheduled to be replaced within the next couple of years. This is actually a very exciting project since it will include some architectural and design considerations since the iconic roof is so unique. Our funds have been leveraged to move this project forward along with roofing replacement at the Eugene Public Library and Fire Station 1. Several general funded projects are also scheduled to be completed, including replacement of the roofs at Fire Station 10 and the facility's main office. Several HVAC upgrade projects are scheduled to be completed within the CIP, including Fire Station 10 and the Second and Chambers Training Facility, the Ed Coleman Center Boys and Girls Club, and Peterson Bar and Community Center, which is pictured above. Consistent with our climate recovery goals, each project will look for opportunities to improve efficiency, eliminate the use of fossil fuels, perform better, and reduce operations and maintenance costs. Many of these projects include replacement of R22, a refrigerant known to be harmful to the environment. While our current strategy moves away from R22 to a less harmful product, the industry is changing and new legislation is expected to be introduced soon. Facilities and city staff have been engaged with other public agencies and stakeholders on the subject to help determine the best approach going forward. One of the areas, one area the Building and Infrastructure CIP is responsible for, which isn't always obvious, is parking lot preservation and maintenance. Several paving projects are scheduled to be completed, including repairs at Echo Hollow Pool and repairs and paving and parking expansion at Eugene Police Department Headquarters Facility. Several large exterior repair projects were completed in the last CIP, including the Second and Chambers Training Facility, Graham Field House, and Historic Sheldon Murphy Johnson House. This photo is of the repairs that took place last year at the Second and Chambers Facility, which has now been completed. SMJ House was also recently completed, which was a very complex project requiring a different method of contracting where the contractor managed both the design and construction process. Eugene Police Department Headquarters Building has been designated for exterior siding repairs and window replacement in the upcoming CIP. Over the last several years, Facilities has worked closely with the Recreation Division on three major renovation projects, which include Campbell Community Center, Echo Hollow Pool, and most recently Sheldon Pool. All three projects have been completed and are open to the public. The projects expanded each facility, increased programming and aquatic space, and included needed capital repairs and energy efficiency upgrades, which will result in substantial GHG reductions at both pools. All three projects achieved LEED Silver accreditation as well. While the recreation construction projects have been completed, work has been underway to acquire property in the Churchill area for a potential multi-use community center and aquatics facility. Seven acres of vacant land has been purchased directly west of the Mattie Reynolds Park as a possible future site. Capital funds are often utilized to not only preserve and maintain building assets, but to reduce ongoing operational costs. In addition to energy efficiency upgrades such as LED lighting conversions, projects are also completed that help reduce maintenance and maximize the useful life of building systems. To help identify these projects, Facilities utilizes a work order system that tracks building maintenance requests and recurring issues that require more time and effort for staff to address. As an example, a study and design work are scheduled to be completed for Amazon Pool to install a hydrozo finish on the pool shell. This is a more durable finish that has been used at Echo Hollow and Sheldon Pools. While the upfront cost to apply the finish will be more expensive, the lifecycle cost will be substantially lower since we will no longer need to repaint the pool shell every few years. downtime for annual maintenance and the impact to pool patrons will also be reduced. Meeting the Climate Recovery Ordinance goals is a priority for the Capital Budget Facilities Division. The 2016 Solar Energy Group Study, which identified several paths to meet CERO goals related to the operations of city buildings, is being updated to reflect our progress and to make recommendations on additional efforts. Current strategies have included LED lighting upgrades, retro commissioning building systems, and fuel switching HVAC systems from natural gas to electricity to help reduce the use of fossil fuels. The CIP includes $1 million toward CERO projects over the biennial. Included in this CIP is the Roosevelt Yard Campus, which houses parks and open space and public works maintenance, including fleet services and traffic operations. Many of the buildings were constructed as early as 1955 and need to be replaced due to the building condition, growing operational needs, and seismic resiliency. In fact, a large number of the buildings currently in use are repurposed parking bays that have been converted to office and meeting space. Master planning work is underway to determine long-term facility needs for the Public Works Campus. The Fleet Facility is one of the higher priorities given that it directly supports and maintains public safety vehicles and equipment. Several grants have also been applied for, which should help with facility planning and capital costs. As you've likely heard, the city is in the process of negotiating negotiating the purchase of the E-Web Headquarters Facility to be used as a city hall. The facility was constructed in 1988 and includes roughly 100,000 square feet of office and meeting space. Facility staff are currently evaluating the building to determine its condition and any maintenance and repair needs. So far, we've learned that the building has received multiple repairs and upgrades in recent years such as modernization of the elevators and HVAC system. Potential projects necessary to move into the facility include painting, carpet replacement, some building system changes such as access control and security upgrades, restroom improvements, ADA upgrades, and most significantly renovations to the north north building to accommodate the council chamber and work session meeting rooms. Since the CIP was developed before there was a plan to purchase the facility, no projects were specifically identified in the upcoming CIP. However, we anticipate opportunities to use capital funds for future energy efficiency upgrades such as LED lighting replacement, new digital building controls, and HVAC improvements targeted at reducing energy and natural gases. A key indicator we track in our database is the Facility Condition Index, or FCI, to determine a building's overall condition. A lower FCI percentage represents a building that's in better condition, and a high FCI usually means the facility is in need of repairs or improvements. Our goal is to maintain a good FCI rating, which means only 15% of the facility is in need of some minor repairs, minor renovations or repairs. The pie chart in this slide represents all general fund facilities. As you can see, slightly less than about two-thirds have a good FCI and about a third rate is fair. This chart represents deficiencies by distress. And as almost 75% of our total deficiencies are because the system is beyond its projected service life. Due to proactive preservation and maintenance practices, we're able to extend the useful life of many of the building systems that are beyond service life, which helps reduce long-term capital investment costs. It's been about five years since our last complete Buildings and Structures Condition Assessment. We are currently planning to update the Condition Database and software system in the upcoming CIP. So the charts will likely look different during the next CIP presentation. I'll now hand it over to Jennifer to discuss Public Works Projects.
All right, thank you, Jeff. So I'm Jennifer Willer. I am the City Engineer, and I will be covering the five public work service areas that are in the CIP. And so that includes airport, parks and open space, stormwater, transportation, and wastewater. There are a number of guides and plans that are used throughout the Public Works Programs, and this captures some of the more citywide plans as well as a couple of key public work-specific plans. But for citywide plans, the Climate Action Plan, Envision Eugene are two of the really big ones that influence our programs. The 2035 TSP and the is probably the one that's most significant for our transportation system. And then we also have Parks and Recreation System Plan for the Parks and Open Space as well as the Airport Master Plan for the airport. So as I go through each of the five service areas, I will go through this kind of list for each of them, talk about some area-specific guidance, funding sources for each service area, climate action, and sustainability practices in each service area. And then I'll go through some example projects and programs. The Public Works area is pretty big, so I'm going to just give some real highlights of some projects and programs that kind of illustrate the work that's being done. And if anybody has questions further about projects, just let me know. So first up is airport. And the airport service area includes 12 projects and one program and has a number of specific airport guides and plans in addition to the citywide plans that we talked about. Some important ones here are the Airport Master Plan Update, the Airport Advisory Committee Recommendations, and the FAA Capital Improvement Plan. So as Kasia mentioned at the beginning, the airport is the biggest service area in the CIP at $146.9 million. And most of the funding is from Airport Construction Fund as well as FAA funding. And as Kasia noted, none of this is considered, is none of this is from city general fund. These are all specific airport revenues that are supported by airport fees and grants. Regarding climate action and sustainability, the airport continues to look at ways to make construction techniques and the materials that are used more sustainable and less and have less embodied greenhouse gas emissions. A couple of years ago, not, I didn't come here to the Planning Commission, but I have talked about in the last CIP that the airport was selected to participate in a study of other airports across the nation for zero or low emissions, what it was called Zero and Low Emissions Roadmap. And it was to look at opportunities in airports to reduce greenhouse gas emissions. And so one of the real future opportunities here at the airport is to look for ways to implement the recommendations that came out of that roadmap. Next slide. So for the airport projects, there's really two primary categories of projects. The first is rehabilitation and preservation. So most of these projects are really just preserving and rehabilitating existing facilities at the airport. And you can see a lot of it is pavement preservation work and with some power supply and seismic upgrade work that's included here. And then the other primary category for airport projects is cap, new capital facilities. And that is primarily the terminal building addition of Concourse C, which is has about 70 has about $75 million in the current CIP. And these are pretty preliminary costs and will continue to change as they further develop. And I believe that council was given a presentation about the terminal expansion earlier this month. So the next service area is parks and open space. And this service area includes 21 projects and programs across the city. And it has a whole host of guides and planning documents that are used to select projects. Including in addition to the general citywide plans that were mentioned earlier, there are also some park-specific plans. There are some different management plans. And then I the 2018 Parks and Recreation Bond Measure is on here, although those projects have been finished up and there aren't any shown here in the CIP. So the Parks and Open Space portion of the CIP is about $28.6 million. And most of the funding does come from parks SDCs in the amount of $18 million. And for climate action and sustainability, the Parks and Open Space Division and projects continue to look for ways to improve park irrigation. So ways to reduce water usage or and make it more efficient. Upgrading lighting, so going from old style lighting to LED lights. And also improving our green infrastructure so that it is less maintenance intensive. But it also is able to grow better here in our conditions. And then there are also, there's a real focus on renovating existing parks again to make them easier to maintain and operate more efficiently. Some future opportunities include looking for places to plant more trees, continuing to look at construction methods and materials to reduce embodied greenhouse gas emissions into the materials as well as additional opportunities to implement the Parks and Recreation System Master Plan. So there are a couple of primary project categories for Parks and Open Space projects in the CIP. The first is upgrades and capacity enhancements. And this category has a lot of renovation of existing parks as well as some master planning processes. So two pretty significant master plans that will be worked on over this CIP is the Alton Baker Park Master Plan and the Washington Jefferson Park Master Plan. The other large category in the CIP for Parks and Open Space projects are for new capital facilities. And there are a mix of new parks that are planned across the city in the CIP. And the largest of which is the downtown Riverfront Plaza. And the next one would be the Golden Gardens Park and Sports Complex Phase One. So you'll notice that there's a couple of projects here that are just the first phase of park development in the CIP. The next service area is stormwater. This service area includes 30 projects and programs again across the city. And it has a whole host of guides and plans that also guide this program. But I will say that all of these are really about implementing various regulatory permits and legal framework that just governs clean water. And 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 so, like I said, this program is very regulatory focused. This program is 12.7 million with a majority of the funding coming from stormwater utility capital, which are the stormwater fees that are paid by residences and businesses in the city. And the next largest area of funding is from stormwater SDCs. And for climate action and sustainability, this program is going to continue its focus on eliminating drywells. So drywells are, they look like catch basins. They wa stormwater runs off into them, but they tend to have an open bottom to them, which allows them to drain directly into the ground. And if there is high groundwater in the area, then that runoff from the streets goes directly into groundwater. So we're trying to eliminate that situation so that we can capture that water and not contaminate any groundwater. We also have a number of projects that look to restore the function of open waterways and streams in our area to better function again, dealing with erosion and bank stabilization type of work. And then stormwater system rehabilitation is again about sealing cracks and making our system operate more efficiently and not lose capacity of our system due to breakages or blockages in the system. Some future opportunities in this program are being very strategic. Look, just continuing to refine our methods of how we can be more strategic and how we select projects so that we can get the most bang for our buck. And can also continuing to do what's called low impact development, which is looking for ways to do more green infrastructure treatment and reduce hardscape and more structural types of stormwater facilities. So the categories for stormwater projects, again, two primary categories. The first is upgrades and capacity enhancements. So these are pretty much all retrofits of existing facilities to have them either operate more efficiently or reduce maintenance costs to the facilities. And it includes a number of replacing existing green infrastructure that has either kind of met its lifespan and or we have better ways of doing things from the time that it was originally built, as well as a couple of those drywell elimination projects that I talked about earlier. Next slide. The other category is functional and safety improvements. And again, these are existing stormwater facilities that are in a condition that they don't carry the water that they need to carry. Or there are safety issues such as bank stabilization or potential flooding issues. And you can see that this this category of the CIP just has a lot of work across the city that's included here. So transportation is the next service area. This includes 36 projects and programs across the city and in this CIP. It is heavily influenced by the 2035 Transportation System Plan as well as the Street Repair Bond Measure that was passed by voters in 2017. So if you'll recall, that listed a number of specific projects that had to be done. And so there are a number of projects in the CIP that are actually implementing those listed street projects. We also use the ADA Transition Plan for the public right of way that the city has adopted. We have a payment management program. We have the Vision Zero Program that also helps us identify safety projects throughout our area. So the transportation program has quite a variety of funding that goes into it. The largest category of funding for this CIP is federal funds. And we'll get to this in the next slide, but most of that federal funding is related to the Franklin Boulevard Project. The next service or the next funding, next largest spending area in the CIP is Payment Preservation Capital, which is our City of Eugene local gas tax, which goes entirely to capital projects. For climate action and sustainability, we continue to focus on multimodal and safety projects for all users. Payment preservation strategies are to rehabilitate existing pavements before they fall into a category where they need to be reconstructed, which is much more expensive and impactful to the environment as well as to the traveling public and the adjacent property owners. And then looking for ways that we can improve our traffic operations and signalization. So as noted down below in future opportunities, using intelligent transportation systems and things that will increase the flow of traffic and the safety so that just to kind of reduce delays in traveling, reduce people having to just inefficiently get around the city. And then another big piece of our opportunities for climate action is just reducing the number, the amount of waste that comes from our projects and using more sustainable materials. Eugene has been a real leader in this area around transportation and our paving techniques. But there's always some things that we can do better here because as Kasia mentioned, this is one of the areas where construction techniques do have kind of the most greenhouse gas emissions embodied into the construction. So for transportation projects, there's actually three areas that I noted as being kind of the largest categories here, functional and safety projects. So these are about getting our system to work better and be safer. And so includes a number of new new treatments to intersections as well as some in the functional improvement. So one of the functional improvements listed here is a load strengthening project for the Coburg Road Biaduct. You may have noticed that there's signs up that have limited commercial loads across that bridge. And so we did get a grant that we can do some strengthening to that structure and remove those limitations to the biaduct. The other categories of projects, upgrades and capacity enhancement. This is two very large federally funded projects. And I should notice note that on the last slide, all of those projects had federal funds, include grants included in those projects. And so so do these first two projects on this slide here under the upgrades and capacity enhancement category. Two large federally funded projects, the Franklin Boulevard Transformation, as well as the River Road Santa Clara Bike and Pedestrian Bridge. And then the third category of projects that's pretty significant here is the Preservation and Maintenance category. It includes the preservation projects that are covered by the local gas tax as well as the 2017 Street Repair Bond Projects. And so the final category in Public Works is the wastewater service area. And it includes eight projects and programs across the city. And it is primarily influenced by the 2020 Wastewater Master Plan, which is really focused on addressing the infiltration and inflow into our existing system, which basically comes from stormwater and groundwater that gets into the wastewater system through cracks and and openings. And basically will reduce the capacity of those pipes and then downstream potentially reduces capacity at the wastewater treatment plant. So a big focus of our program is just to rehabilitate and repair pipes across our system that are most impacted by what we call INI. The new guide to the wastewater program here is the Housing Implementation Pipeline or the HIP. And it specifically had an action in it to include a project in this next CIP that would support housing and specifically identified a wa wastewater project. So for the wastewater service area, it's about $20.2 million. And the majority of the funding is wastewater utility capital, which is wastewater user fees that are paid by residents and businesses here in the city. So for climate action and sustainability, this pro this program really focuses again on reducing wasting existing materials. And when I was talking about addressing inflow and infiltration of the pipe, that is primarily through lining existing pipes and getting to that before there's a total failure in the system and those pipes need to be dug up and replaced altogether. The other place as related to the inflow and infiltration to the wastewater system is that it does reduce the energy that's needed to collect and then treat that wastewater down at the wastewater treatment plant. So anything we can do to reduce that is very good for energy costs. Future opportunities in the wastewater program continue to be to refine our model, being able to find be more strategic and find places where we can spend less but address the most INI into the stud into the system. And next slide. So projects here for the wastewater, there's a couple of categories. As I've mentioned here, most of this program is focused on pipe rehab rehabilitation to reduce INI. So that's lining the pipes rather than digging them up and making repairs that way. And it's estimated in the first two years of this CIP that we expect to address 41,000 feet of pipe. And that includes sealing the manholes and all the laterals that are in the right of way as well. So a couple of really big impactful projects to address that stormwater groundwater that's getting into our system. And then the project that directly came out of the HIP process is the 11th and Crow Road Wastewater Extension Project. So engineering worked with planning and community development to review the wastewater master plan and look for opportunities of where the system can be expanded to support housing growth. And this area was identified as having the potential to provide the most units as at the least cost. And so this area has a potential for over 1,200 housing units. And I believe that the areas zoned both R1 and R2. And planning and community development estimated that it also would support over 500 commercial jobs and over 350 industrial jobs in the project area. And that's the end of the Public Works section. Thank you.
All right. Thank you so much, Jennifer. To recap what you have just seen and heard, the 23 through 29 CIP requests a total of $310.7 million in capital spending over the next six years. City staff has continued to improve upon GHG reporting where possible and has identified 128 individual projects or programs for the CIP. And this year, staff has also identified about $3.6 million in added operational costs as a result of capital projects included. Looking at our timeline, the Budget Committee made a recommendation to council to adopt the proposed CIP on February 15. Council will meet in a couple of weeks to hold a public hearing and take action. And then later this spring, the adopted CIP will serve as the basis of our capital program and the proposed 2023 to 2025 biennial budget. Finally, I just want to say thanks to all of the City of Eugene staff who worked to put this document together. It was a lot of work and a lot of collaboration and hopefully it is shown in the presentation you've seen today as well as in the document. Also want to thank each of you for your time and attention this evening. And if anyone has some questions about the presentation, staff are on hand. Hopefully we'll be able to answer your questions.
Well, thanks, Kasia. Can we exit out of the screen so I can see, you know, the commissioners? Are do any commissioners have any questions? Well, thanks, Kasia. Can we exit out of the screen so I can see, you know, the commissioners? Are, do any commissioners have any questions? Looks like you're off the hook. Oh, excuse me. Right there. Commissioner Edwards, I saw your hand first.
Thank you. I, I just, I appreciate the presentation. Thank you, guys. And I'll admit, I, I understand this process a little bit better than I used to. I work in government myself. I'm curious, I, I watched the city council work session on Monday and I'm kind of curious as to how the budget process that they are kind of going through feeds into revisions to this CIP. Cause as I was like listening to their priorities around homelessness and climate resiliency and things like that. I just, I know, I recognize that these are capital investments. But I'm, I'm just kind of curious if there is there, you know, based on their priorities, do, do we does staff go back in and tweak things around and, and decide to re- reappropriate investments anywhere? I'm just kind of curious about that, how that all works together.
I'll jump in. It's just probably lying, not me. I'm Vicky Silver. This is the Finance Director and Budget Manager. So you're right, it is capital. This, the capital treatment program is all capital. And so it, we don't typically reappropriate capital to operational. There, we are looking at the E-Web building, obviously. So that, that will be likely be a change to the capital budget when we finish this twenty twenty three, twenty five budget. And it's not uncommon, you know, we always say budgets are a plan. So the CIP is a plan. Jennifer and her crew and all the other, Jeff and his crew have been doing this work since last summer. So things change. We see a lot of change, I think, since the beginning of the pandemic and it's more notable to me since then, but I'm sure people have experienced this forever. Projects get held up because of, you know, funds or vendors, whatever it is. And so we always have changes to the capital program, but I don't, I don't foresee our current budget situation and what we're facing having an impact on the CIP in any major way. So, and we usually call it out in the budget process. So you'll see capital in the new budget. And if there are changes, we recognize that. So. Does that help?
Yeah, that's very helpful. I appreciate it. Thank you.
And Commissioner Beeson.
Uh, thank you. I've got a few questions. I guess first I'd like to say thank you. I've looked at the capital plan a number of times over the years. I just, I just really appreciate all of you guys. And I know there's an army of people behind you at work on this and appreciate the document a lot in terms of kind of a tool or a learning device, if you will, for the community and I'm sure for the employees of, of the city. I, I found this time as I was going through it and, and maybe it's been in there for a while. But all of the, in each of the program areas, the way you guys have provided all of the links back to all of the enabling documents or plans that support all of this. I haven't gone down very many of those roads, but I, I would like to. I suspect when I have questions about individual projects are probably all down one of those link roads somewhere and, or the answers are. But anyway, I appreciate the way you put this thing together. I, I like it a lot. So I'm, I certainly don't have any criticisms. I, I have a couple of questions. Let me ask, we'll see how it goes and then I might come back for another round if I get going too much. You know, I'm, I, I'm not, the, the document has a, a clearly a great deal about greenhouse gas reporting, how you go through and determine what those are during construction and operation. Or how you do all that. And then you have these, you link it back to the plan, which, which is great and it makes a lot of sense to me. I, I found myself though, kind of early on in the document, there's a, there's a there's a couple of places. Paw through this a little bit here. You guys have a I'm not really finding it right off here. Hang on. Okay. So it's, it's in the the Reader's Guide, early on, the CIP Criteria and Qualifications. I'm on page eight. I think I am page nine. It's qualifying criteria and you li- there, you list the qualifying criteria to get something into the capital plan. And, and I guess, you know, the idea of the, of the greenhouse gas and all of that and the connection back to the Climate Action Plan and the Climate Recovery Ordinance and so on, it's, it's embedded in here, I guess. But I, I was kind of, I'm kind of thinking that it'd be nice if you call that out a, a bit. And it kind of leads me to a question. I, I mean, I don't really see anything in the qualifying criteria. When you go through and look at things to get into the plan of what, of how connected they are to the Climate Recovery Ordinance or the Climate Action Plan. You make those references in some of the program areas directly. So I, where I kind of go with that, I'm not wondering too much. I found myself thinking about Amazon Pool and it was kind of raising a question. I know that you have you have replaced the heating systems at Sheldon and at Echo Hollow. And you've done fuel switching there. And I know that you're going to do a study at Amazon Pool around fuel switching. So I found myself, you have all the pages open here. You, I the general idea I have is that when you look to actually make those investments to replace equipment, it's usually based on end of life or the equipment has lost certain efficiencies and so on, which I think are pretty standard. And my, my question is, if you go through and look at some of this stuff, because that one feels like it's kind of, kind of a meaningful amount of greenhouse gas that probably comes from that. Is there any opportunity going forward that you're looking at the greenhouse gas side of this could trigger projects being elevated or done quicker? Maybe even done before the end of their useful life in order to switch to a cleaner fuel. So let me stop it there and see if that's a question.
All right. That's a great question, Ashley. And yes, we, we look at opportunities all the time to you know, reduce our carbon footprint. Amazon Pool is a good example. We're, we're excited. Because of the systems we installed at Sheldon and Echo. Because they, they make such a big impact. Pools, we know, are a big producer. Greenhouse gas is just based on heating, especially in outdoor pool, to be honest. And so we always look at those opportunities. One of the things that we, we did actually both projects is we, you know, the equipment you can buy for a pool to heat it. You can only kind of go so far and it can, it can heat down to certain temperatures. And so we've actually kept the, some of the existing equipment. Now, we don't rely on like the gas boilers and things, but it's, it's there if you go really, really cold temperatures and things like that. And so we're actually not throwing away everything when we do some of those projects. We, we implement new technology that's more efficient, electrified, so forth. But then we'll keep some of those old systems in place, just because we know there's useful life and, and there's some value to that. And so we, we do that in a lot of projects. And there are other triggers as well. And we're looking, I mentioned our twenty two replacement. And so that's the refrigerant in our air conditioning units and, and heat pumps. And so that's it's, you know, problematic product. And I mentioned, there's kind of some conversation going on about what we can do to convert from that to something else. And it's a little bit fuzzy right now on where the industry is going, but we're looking at those opportunities, not just because of the the product going away, we're not being able to maintain it. But we see that as like, there's a multiple benefits. And so then we can move to something that's much more favorable to the environment. As we, we think about the, just the equipment and its useful life and so on. And so some of those might actually have a little bit of useful life in it, but we know we can only buy the product so long if we need to recharge our systems and things like that. So I guess to answer your question, yes, we we often do that with many of our projects because we're, we're, we have a lot of goals and we're excited about making progress on.
Thank you. I've got one or two others. I'm gonna pause. I see Commissioner Baling's in line. I think I'll go for round two in here in a minute. Commissioner Bailey.
Thank you. I, I have several questions also, so we might take turns here a little bit. Going to that same page of the CIP of the qualifying criteria. It says one of the sources is requests from neighborhood groups or citizen groups. And I wonder how neighborhood or citizen groups get into this process at all? How do they bring their projects to budgeting? And what degree of consideration do they have given all the priorities based on master plans and city planning and all these other overriding documents? So that's the first one.
So I think I'll jump in on this one because we get that a lot in public works. There's always, you know, we have infrastructure projects all across the city and people want to know how to get their project on the list. And really it, in that capital, in the master planning area is really the best way to get inserted in. On the transportation side, Public Works Engineering is starting what we're calling a move huge project. So move EUG process. And that is going to be going out and soliciting a lot of public feedback about transportation projects that are needed throughout the community. And so keep an eye out for that. I, it's going to be out on the city website and that's going to be a great way to help influence which projects get selected for the bond measure that was passed in twenty twenty two, so that just this last fall. Where, and we're going to be selecting the active transportation safety projects for that funding to go to council later this year for their approval. So otherwise, it's, it is just reaching out to Public Works Engineering and identifying a project. And then we look, if it's already identified in some of our plans, we can provide some information about when that project is planned to go forward. Or we can make a note of it to include it in future plans, provided that it meets a number of these other objectives that the city has in place for prioritizing projects.
So can I assume there's not a process in place to do outreach to the neighborhood associations at some point in the planning? In the CIP planning? Or is that all after the fact because it's already gone through budget and the projects have already been identified?
So that for the Public Works project, most of the projects come out of these other master plans. So that's why it's really important to be part of those ma- so the TSP update or the Parks and Rec Master Plan. And those do have a lot of neighborhood involvement in developing those plans. And that's the best way to get your projects on long-term plans because then we draw from those plans into the CIP.
Okay. Thanks. And then you mentioned several projects receiving federal funding. How, how, what's the source of that? And how did that come about? And is it just a one-time thing? Because of funds that have been recently made available for infrastructure?
So a, a little of both. Yes, the bipartisan infrastructure bill has made a lot of federal funds available to us for public infrastructure. But we are, the City of Eugene is part of a regional group, the Metropolitan Planning Commission. And so we get our MPO, yeah, and Metropolitan Planning Organization. And we actually get a a certain amount of federal funds through that organization to distribute across our region. And so every year, the City of Eugene gets federal funds through the MPO for our transportation projects. So we've used a lot of federal funds throughout the year, but some of these big projects that identified this time in the CIP, we've actually gone out and applied directly to those federal agencies for funding for those projects.
Yeah, great, great. Okay. And my last question is a little technical one. I, I worked in capital planning at the University of California. And I'm just wondering about carry forward of funds and what your processes of allocation, does it have to be used within a certain year or by the end of a certain year? Can it carry forward into the following year if it's not all utilized? Or how does that work for City of Eugene?
I can speak to that a little bit unless Jennifer, if you want to address it. So depending on the fund, so a lot of our bond funds have to be used within a certain timeframe.
Right.
But funds that are, you know, allocated through the CIP process and then into the budget process. If they aren't used within that year, then they will be carried forward and they won't show up on the next CIP. So you might see some funding in the budget this year that is not included in the CIP because it was allocated previously and carried forward.
Thank you.
Commissioner Beeson again.
Aging infrastructure. Sort of one of my favorite topics. So I'm, I'm kind of fascinated under the, under buildings or the the public building, that, that whole area of programs, you have the facility condition assessment, which I, it's pretty interesting. A couple of things, I guess, and I'm, my questions are, I'm trying to make a little bit general. I'd be a little careful with that. But I, I'm kind of looking for, I don't want to go too far down into the weeds. I'm, I'm curious, across the programs, I find you, you kind of address aging infrastructure, at least in my mind, particularly in areas like the wastewater system and the stormwater system, certainly on the buildings. I'm kind of wondering, do you guys do anything that's roughly analogous to the facility condition assessment? Do you do that in other areas? And where I'm kind of going with it, I, I think, particular, let me take the wastewater system. I'm assuming there was a pretty substantial amount of it built forty to sixty years ago. And there it sits. You've added, we've added to it, so on. But as it ages, I'm assuming we have rehabilitation work coming at us. I, I'm still, I guess, I, I understand you, you've got a, a process now where you go down. I heard that about the forty one thousand feet you're going to do. And that, that seems pretty cool. I guess my question, general question is, are, in terms of aging infrastructure around the city in these program areas, do you feel like we're keeping up? We're caught up? Are we? It felt like under, under the facilities, as I read that, we're, we're lagging a bit. At least in your estimation. Can you talk about that a little bit, kind of how we're doing in the whole area of aging infrastructure?
So I can talk about some of the public works. And we do do that same kind of assessment in other infrastructure areas of condition assessment. For the wastewater one that you bring up, I would say we're fairly fortunate in our area in that we don't get a lot of deterioration or corrosiveness from our adjacent soils and things like that. So really the age of our wastewater system is really affected at the joints of the different pipes. So it's mostly all old concrete pipe that's in the ground and it's the joints that failed with that concrete. And so when we go through and line that pipe, it basically becomes like a new pipe. And which is a really cool thing about that wastewater system that we it, it can be, you know, a seventy-year-old pipe that we can just line and it's like a whole brand new pipe. The other system that we regularly do kind of that condition assessment on and manage is our roadways. So street pavement, we go through, we rate the condition of that pavement on a regular basis. And have a whole assessment. We put out an annual pavement management system report that you can find on our website so that you can see what the overall condition of our street system is and what the needs are. But I would say as a, keeping it general and high level, it is, it is a never- It is a never-ending saga to address the preservation of the existing system and to deal with that kind of age and. Environmental deterioration of infrastructure. And um, you know, and that's why, like on the transportation side, that we go forward with these uh. Street repair bonds and things like that. And and we really base that information off this, the payment management system to. Show what our needs are going to be over the coming, you know, five to seven years to try and get close to that annual need. Of amount of money to preserve the system.
Good. Well, thank you. Thanks very much. And thanks for all, thanks for all the information. Appreciate it.
Commissioner Lear.
Yeah, thank you also all for the incredibly informative report. And I had another kind of general question, which was. Are the effects of uh general inflation, high cost of materials and construction affecting these capital requests over the last few years? Are there things that are going way over budget? Are we delaying projects to try to get to a point where supply chains have fully recovered? You know, what's the general impact of those economic turmoils on our our capital program?
I can, I'm sure Jennifer can speak to this as well, but yeah, the inflation has been a huge. Uh, factor in the last, you know, three or four years. It it's actually been a factor for a while now, especially. So. You know, it's been trickier and going through bid processes and and rate sizing projects um within the budget. You know, interestingly enough. We, we actually got really competitive bids on our two pool projects, which we weren't expecting. And so. Um, I think they were high-profile enough, and there is a lot of excitement around those projects where we actually. Um, did really well. And one of the other projects came in quite a bit over budget, so we had the value engineer. Um, some of the elements and decreased the square footage of the facility and a variety of things. Uh, but you know, ended up. Achieving the goals of the project still all the same. And so we're pretty proud of. All of the, especially the bond projects that we recently worked on. Those are probably the bigger ones in our facilities uh department. But. Um, but yeah, it's a challenge. Um, when we. You know, see dollars not go as far for the capital budget, it really pushes things to more of a reactive. Uh, approach where we wish we could have replaced that roof uh a year ago, but now we're kind of catching it together until we can uh. Fund it in a couple of years. And um, and I, you know, we have a good team. Handling day-to-day maintenance, and so we're able to make that all work. Um, the other piece of it, too, we've seen just in general with uh the capital budget, it it can, it can keep things. Kind of status quo, we can make improvements as we go along, but then we'll have bond projects or we'll have. You know, one-time dollars that'll help us kind of make some bigger progress on some of those, some of those more challenging projects. And so I think we manage it well, but it is. Inflation is a big factor in our work.
Yeah, I I agree with Jeff. Inflation has always been something that we've dealt with, but over, I'd say especially the last year. Um, it really has impacted our projects. We haven't had to cancel anything, but we've definitely looked at um having to phase some projects to make. To do some more affordable sections of work. And we've also had some projects where we bid them. And we thought that we didn't get very competitive prices or that they were just too high. And so we. Um, canceled that bid and then waited a while or made some tweaks to the project. And then went out and rebid it and ended up awarding it later um in a secondary bid process, but. Um, so far, we haven't had to cancel any projects to um. Address the increased costs, but it's definitely um making us have to kind of uh. Be strategic in how we plan our projects, potentially phase our projects, and even kind of when we bid the project.
Is there a city standard contingency percentage that's built into these projects, or does it go project by project?
For us in engineering, it's project by project. Um, it usually is somewhere around um ten to twenty percent, but it really depends on. Kind of the complexity of the project and the size of the project and some other things on where you kind of fall in that range.
Appreciate the information.
Okay, final call for questions from commissioners, which I don't think I see any. I also want to thank staff for that. Uh, it was really informative. I really liked seeing uh the potential um. For improvement out in the West Eugene, it'll add a lot of additional houses and and commercial jobs go along with it. Um, I know that. I, my personal life had been focused on that area as well, and it's nice to to see that this, the city is is uh seeing its value out there. So that's great. Um, I think I'm going to head this over to Cave for any announcements uh and or any uh comments from commissioners, perhaps we wrap up this evening?
So just very briefly, sitting in for Alyssa Hanson as planning director tonight, um. I only have a couple reminders about upcoming meetings on March fourteenth. Uh, we'll be coming back with the Willamette Greenway code amendments. Uh, at that meeting, we should have draft findings and potentially might reach a recommendation from the commission. Uh, pending the amount of time that's left, we'll probably provide a work plan overview um. For um the planning divisions um work plan over the next year. Um, and you've received a couple of uh doodle polls uh looking for. Uh, attendees uh on a couple of dates coming up. Uh, and if you have questions about that, feel free to follow up with me or Alyssa. Um, and I encourage you to go ahead and and uh mark your availability. That's all I've got.
Great. Well, I think that'd make that wraps us up for this evening. Thank you very much for for tuning in, joining. Um, thank you, city staff, for the. Wonderful presentation and giving us the information we need. And then obviously fellow commissioners for joining us tonight. Thank you very much. We are adjourned.